... Our meeting to order at six thirty. Roll call. Oh, so we... Pledge allegiance first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now roll call.
(inaudible)
Here.
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 Ben Arstad.
Here.
Eric Stoner.
Here.
Leslie Krieger.
Here.
Eric Stoner.
Here.
Full group then. All right, we need approval agenda. Anything we need to change or add, take out? Right, a motion to accept it as presented?
Motion accepted.
By Derek, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ray. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say sign. Motion passed, agenda approved. We're on to public comment. And this is for items on the agenda only. There are two items here that we're dealing with pretty much trilogy, and this is the time, if you want to talk about it, to talk about it. Obviously, yep, go ahead. Just need to put your name and your address, so we have that in the record.
Martin Andreski, twenty-one oh five Middle Ridge Drive here in Holly Township. I guess it's just short and sweet, you know, for my comment today regarding the trilogy health proposal. As a resident of the neighborhood that it's adjacent to, I couldn't support it more. I think it'd probably be the best option that we could have, you know, for that use of the property. I've looked at quite a few of the properties that they owned or have been involved in. They appear to do everything that they say they're gonna do within reason. They seem to be well-kept, well-maintained, and they seem to, you know, be good neighbors to the thing. And again, I, you know, it's sincerely probably the best options that I've seen come by board since I've come in two thousand and twenty. That's the only comments I have, so hopefully it can pass and we can move forward and bring an asset to the township.
Thank you, Mike.
Excellent.
Any further comment? No public hearings? Approval of minutes from March twelve. Changes? So, motion...
Motion approved.
Motion approved. By Derek, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ben. Any further discussion on the minutes? Those in favor approving as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed, say sign. Motion passed. Communications, we have none, is that right, Karen?
Yes, correct.
Old business, we have none, so we're on to new business. Looking at site plan application by trilogy. Alexis probably is gonna do the talking first. That's not the plan that we got.
Yeah, that's not what we...
Uh, did I miss a page somewhere?
I'd like to see if it's in there.
So, we can move it around if we have questions. All right, good evening. Thank you for having me again tonight. So, I'm just gonna begin with an overview to recap the process. I know that a couple of you have seen this plan in front of you a variety of times, and over those periods, the plan has changed slightly, but for some of you, it's the first time, so I'll give an overview. But if you want to go into specific details or have questions, please feel free to stop me. So, tonight in front of you, first is the request to approve a site plan application for a single-story around sixty-five thousand square foot building with eighty-four units for a convalescent home, also known as a nursing home. This will have a total of eighty-six beds, as well as thirty villas in the back half of the site, which are going to be constructed as attached duplexes. So, the project is located on a sixteen point six-five acre property just north of the Fish Lake and Grange Hall intersection, and therefore falls within the Grange Hall-Fish Lake overlay district. Also on your agenda tonight is a request to approve an amendment to a previously approved special use permit. This came before you in February. There was the request to extend that approval. The special use permit for that was originally approved back in January of two thousand and twenty-four. It has a one-year expiration where the applicant must pull a building permit. They needed to get the site plan approved first, so that kind of brings us to tonight. We have the site plan in front of you, and the reason for the amendment to special use is because the site has changed just slightly since the original approval. So, in our, we've got two memos from me tonight, one covering the site plan review and one covering the special land use. I'll sort of discuss them in tandem, but if you have questions, again, please stop me. So, if you refer to the special use memo, on the first page in the introduction, I described the changes between what was originally approved for the special land use and what is in front of you today. So, essentially, the applicant was able to secure an additional three acres along the south end of the site. I do have the original plan, the concept plan, which was attached to that original approval, if we want to take a look. But it was just a chunk of land slivered to the south. This additional property is mainly being used for stormwater detention. But over here, in the southeast of the property, they were also able to do some rearranging and fit two additional duplex units. So, or I guess one, there's two additional units total. And so, that's why the amendment is before you tonight, because of those changes. Because this was an original approval, they've already conducted the public hearing, so we have no public hearing tonight. But the condition of approval with the special use is that they obtain a site plan approval. So, the special use permit won't really be in effect until they obtain approval of the site plan. Any questions so far? So, going back to the site plan memo, this really drills down into all of the standards and your ordinance pertaining to site design, layout, and things like that, but also talks about the overlay district, which has some additional scrutiny and gives the township some ability to have more influence over the final product. So...
Ouch.
Okay, so, let's see. Just to give a brief overview of the site plan review, we've gone back and forth with the applicant and their designers and their consultants to make sure that all of these items are in their plans. Overall, the zoning and use are appropriate for this site. Operating your simple on this site is a special advantage. What they have the crumble for currently is for a planned development to operate for a simple. Now, the reason for the planned development piece is because you'll see on page... On page four of the site plan memo is a table that talks about setbacks, building height, and the items there that are highlighted are notable because they are deviating from the underlying zoning restrictions. So, you'll see for building height in this district, it's typically a maximum of thirty feet. In height, they're proposing most of the building is going to be thirty feet, five inches, but they do have a cuba in the middle of the building that goes up to thirty-seven feet. So, in part of approving this plan development, you are allowing them to deviate on some of these items. Other items include the setbacks from internal drives. The site is pretty tight in terms of layout. They don't have a ton of extra space. So, because of the nature of the use, they have to have circulation around the entire building, and we have found that the deviations from the setbacks are appropriate here. These were also things that were discussed during the original special use permit. And so, just highlighting them for note. And then, to talk a little bit more about the overlay district, part of pursuing a plan development, in this district, they are required to offer a public benefit. You'll see that there is a pathway proposed along the frontage. This is part of the master plan, it supports the overall township pathway plan. Right now, this will sort of dead-end at their property line, but if we want to start creating pedestrian connections, we have to start somewhere. So, the idea is that as other neighboring properties are developed, that pathway will continue. So, that's how they're completing their public benefit. There is also a pathway connection proposed to the northeast of the site. This is something that we talked a lot about when this first came to the commission, and the idea being that it will connect to whatever resulting development happens on the neighboring parcel. Any questions there?
I guess I got a question on the drive or the path on Lake Fish Lake Road. You know, saying that like these other properties are gonna get further developed down the road. I mean, I know like the Jensen's and a few of the other people, like these houses have been there for years and years and years. And then, even if they were to be sold and then owned by somebody else, like for them to be continuing this sidewalk, is this really a possibility? I mean, I'm all for it, I really like the idea of the sidewalk going to the food stand and possibly even up to the Seven Lakes entrance, and we'd be able to connect everything, and that'd be great. But is this even something we can actually do, or is it just gonna be a bunch of concrete that nobody's gonna use?
Right.
I guess that's the only concern that I see.
Sure. That's a great question. So, in a place like Holly that hasn't had as much development as other denser places, thinking of Southern Oakland County, there are places in, for example, Lion Township, very similar in character to Holly in terms of density, character. It was rural in nature for many decades, and then suddenly, there's been some development interest. We're noticing the same type of pattern in Holly, and the idea being as things continue to develop, you'll make these connections. To your point about will that ever really happen, is how do we address that when it's crossing over something like a single-family, you know, individual homeowner? That's something that we'll have to talk through as we plan over the years. So, for a site like this, it's something that's supporting, in the master plan, there's a pathway plan. So, Fish Lake is one of the major corridors that are noted as desirable or ideal for a pathway, and there will be gaps like that single-family home that, like you said, may never sell. We wouldn't necessarily ever require or be even able to require that they install a sidewalk, but once it becomes more complete and we just have these small gaps, what we can do is figure out easements. The township then could either construct it or construct it through the development of other properties as that public benefit, if that were to be the case with how they apply for the development. And so, it's, your point is great, and it's also, it's a challenge because if we say, well, let's wait till it fills in, someone's gotta be the first to make something to connect to. And to give you some solace, this is all in the master plan, so as additional applications come in, we will point to that to say, how can you help us connect this? We, it's, you know, we can't support something that is deviating from our zoning ordinance without being able to support what's been in our master plan for many years. So, it's definitely a long game in terms of creating a pedestrian system.
The rest of the settlement property has quite a little frontage on Fish Lake Road, so that part would at least, but there would still be a residence or two in between, probably, that's not connected, but you guys are someplace.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I did have a question, I hadn't thought of it before. They end up with three acres of south. I assumed to begin with that touched the other properties on Grange Hall Road. What was the purpose of leaving a small strip in between? I assume they bought now, so it does touch those properties. I just, it seemed like it'd be unusable for that three-acre strip if it was all on the south edge of it.
So, do you mean property that's still not included? There is a strip here. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I don't know, I just assumed it touched the properties, I guess I didn't look at it that closely before. It touched all the ones along Grange Hall Road, but it doesn't then, there's actually still... And what's the purpose of leaving that? It probably doesn't have to do with this property so much, but it just isn't...
That's a good question, and it's something that we noticed that, you know, the applicant might be able to speak to. They, you know, they were the ones to negotiate that split. But you're absolutely right, there is likely not a whole lot that can fit here, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And so...
But I don't think that's our concern really today, but it just is, why would you leave a strip that is unusable?
Right.
Or what is the long-term purpose? It seemed like it had the purpose, or they would've sold all the way down those property edges.
Right. Yeah. It's definitely something we noticed, and that when, if ever, there were to be an application, we would question and try to, you know... Anytime you got a change in ownership or a new development, you try to make incremental change toward addressing kind of problems like this.
Well, there's a landslide at some point in time, like just how you split it, so you left this strip, or they left this strip along there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm honestly not sure, but...
Maybe Joe knows, we can ask him in a minute.
Yes, that's right. Okay, any other questions?
I had one. So, there's a phase one, phase two in the project, is that still in the...
Nope, so, what I'm understanding is that they've, so the overlap here is just because they couldn't fit everything onto one sheet.
Okay.
So, this is, and you are correct, they originally were proposing this as two phases, the convalescent home and then the villas, but it is now being proposed as one phase, so...
Okay.
That wasn't a concern before.
Yeah, I just, I didn't, I didn't know how we, how that was gonna evolve.
Yes.
Was it gonna be phase one, and then phase two, have one building pop up, and then fifteen years, the other building pops up, and then instead of like a co-hesive, but that's, that's good. Okay.
Yeah, so that line is just showing the match line between this, just this side of the site, and now it, other sheets show the other side.
Okay.
So, I just had a couple other things to comment on. One being signage, you'll note that they did include signs, but they will have to seek a separate permit for that. We offered a couple of comments there, but that is not part of this approval tonight. And then, in terms of the architectural and design standards, so starting on page five of the site plan memo, I'm gonna switch over here. So, this is something that came up during previous commission meetings, when the special use was brought to you, and originally, we only have these renderings to go off of, and of course, these are quite dark, right? The coloring is maybe deceiving to make it look darker than it really is. And I know the applicant has brought some physical samples of some of the materials tonight. But what has been now also included in this package, beautiful views of what you can expect. You now also have true elevation drawings. So, this was something that in previous reviews we noted was missing. It's something that when we go to review design standards, we really wanna see the specific dimensions and percentages of certain materials. And in the memo, I talk a lot about, are they meeting standards? And they generally are, so there is nothing that they are deviating from necessarily. The one thing I wanted to note was, in previous memos, we have shared that there is a stipulation in the regulations saying that black is not permitted as a color for a facade. They are actually only proposing black for the roofing, and that standard does not apply to roofing. So, it only applies to the facade, which they're not proposing any black facades. Additionally, in the, because this is in the overlay district, architectural compatibility with surrounding structures is something that is in the ordinance and something that you have to consider with the approval. And again, they aren't deviating from any of the specific more quantitative standards. But when you're talking about compatibility, that is a bit more subjective. And so, I just wanted to note that the commission has some additional opportunity to have say in this, and I just wanted to leave it open to see if you have comments on the design. We've got on the first page, you can see sort of the swatches and things like that. Because of where this is located, there aren't a ton of new build homes or businesses in that area. And there are also not many styles that necessarily, we would say, well, if we were in downtown, there's a lot of masonry, there is a very clear defined character. But in this intersection, in this area, it's a little bit all over the place right now. However, again, as developments fill in and you get more applications in front of you, you're going to be sort of setting a precedent here to say, well, it needs to look similar to the character of this new building. And so, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, that's part of your discretion with this approval. However, we don't have any red flags to note about it. And then, another item, parking. Parking was a concern brought up at previous meetings, but they do not only meet the requirements of the ordinance, but they exceed it just a bit. And so, happy to take questions on that if there are any. And then, I'm just gonna keep cruising through, and then I figured we can open it up for questions. But to talk a little bit about the landscaping and the tree replacement, which is the one item that is sort of outstanding tonight. Just gonna get to the landscape lands. So, what you're seeing here is both the required landscaping per the ordinance, which any development would be required to have, but you're also seeing replacement trees. So, I've also got an aerial image that we can pull up, but if you're familiar with the site, you know that there is a good amount of wood stand, and the township has an ordinance on the books that if you are cutting trees down, you have to replace them. There are very specific calculations based on where the tree is being removed. So, in your packet, you'll see this sheet that has the different hatching. And then, oh, I think that the tree survey was in a different packet that I don't have pulled out. But my point is that if you're removing trees from the front setback, for example, you are required to plant more in replacement because you're gonna have a bigger impact from the road versus if you're removing a tree where you are building the actual building, or a driveline, or the stormwater detention pond, you are actually not required to replace that because it's just part of the building. And so, there was a tree survey submitted with this. We found some issues with the calculations, but, and the applicant has submitted a revised version, but we didn't have enough time before the meeting tonight to review that fully. And so, the recommendation in the memo is to approve the plan presented tonight on the condition that a revised compliant tree survey and replacement plan are submitted, and that can be approved administratively. So, if this were something, you know, we still had an issue with the design or architectural compatibility, that's something that we would definitely want your feedback on. But because the replacement is, it's truly just a calculation that anyone cutting, you know, clear-cutting trees in this manner would be required to do, we thought it was appropriate that that could be done at the staff level so that the applicant doesn't have to wait another month to come back in front of this body. So, I'm happy to take questions, but that's, that's pretty much what I have in terms of a site plan approval, and yeah.
So, with the tree stuff, you know, and I've seen this unfortunately, is to leave a tree standing, they put in a curb, and the tree is this far from the curb, so they cut all the roots to make the pavement and curb real go in, and the tree's dead within two years.
Sure.
So, do we have rules on trees that, I mean, clear cuts, obviously, you know, they're cutting a tree, but do we have rules that it's gotta be at least, I mean, root damage, anything like that? What do we do with that?
That's a good question. I will say that with the way the ordinances were in, only certain trees are required to be replaced. So, there are, again, depending on where the tree is being removed, it's either you have to replace it or not, but it's also, it has to be not diseased. If there are diseased or dead trees, they are allowed to remove them without replacement. There's also a list of what's considered invasive species that they don't have to replace because we want them gone anyway. In terms of, you know, the location near the curb and things like that, that's a great question. I, I don't know if there's anything about ordinance speaking to that, but...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they were just gonna remove trees in some areas because of, they were changing the grade and that, and so by covering up roots, you do the same thing. Basically, kill the tree or whatever, so I thought they were really taking most out of them, replacing them, is the answer. I didn't remember, we're talking about leaving very much the way they were.
Right. Well, and one of the things that we do wanna clarify with the tree survey is, the ordinance only requires that they show and inventory the trees that they believe need to be replaced. So, in looking at the aerial, which I can pull up here, you'll see that this whole area is pretty heavily wooded. Some of it could be brush or just, again, dead or diseased trees. One item that I will note to discuss with their landscape architect is that that corner of the site doesn't have a whole lot of trees on the survey. And the survey is what's showing all existing regulated trees, which are the ones they have to replace. So, we will, if, if you are to approve this... So we will, if, if you are to approve this tonight and allow us to approve the tree survey administratively, be taking a close look to make sure that number one, all of the regulated trees are in the survey. And in doing that, what we'll also check is things like which trees are going to remain and are the kind of what you're talking about at risk of, well, we're keeping this tree, it's a great thing, but then it's gonna die anyway. That's something that we can note and feature as a cast.
So this is senior center, I see there's six handicap parking spots. Eighty-seven, eighty-six beds, right? A bunch of stag. How many, how many staff are we gonna have at any given time?
And I will also mention that all of this is sort of self-reported by the applicant, and then the ordinance has calculations for, you know, one parking space per staff plus et cetera.
Right, so that's, but as regards the industry?
No, so it's specific to the use. So for a nursing home, there is a specific calculation. So on page seven of the memo, it talks about, for the nursing home or convalescent home, the requirement is one parking space per five beds, plus one per staff doctor, plus one per employee. The applicant noted that they expect to have levels for staffing at forty employees, and they are building for eighty-six beds, which came to fifty-eight total spaces required. These are things that when you get to the accessible spaces, that's outlined by federal law that is then emulated in the ordinance. So for every twenty-five parking spaces, they're required to have one accessible. So, you know, it's kind of an industry standard, but I see why you asked about that.
Yeah, the parking ordinance probably needs to be reviewed. It's gonna be a mess. It's gonna be a mess three times a year, Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. We have it at the North Point, is it Mission Point, the Mission Point property? That's a disaster.
But the game is, it seems like there's a lot of spaces there, maybe they're not filled up yet. But I go by there every day, and it doesn't seem to fill that parking lot up, so.
Yeah, the ones, ones up north, yeah, up here, maybe they're not full yet. But it's, and it's a very tricky, I wish we could have like full, like parking spots, like extend out and then go away, but it's gonna be, that'll be interesting to see how that.
That was my experience, I family, seven of the four, and certain days that it might not completely full and just no place to park.
The grass, they're out in the residential area.
Parking other places that are not appropriate. And here, they would be left, there's really nothing else other than parking in front of the villas and that, I would assume is the only thing would be left to, and that would block fire lanes pretty much, probably.
Right, so they've got the parking lot up in front, which does have four of the accessible spaces. There's a couple of spaces back here along the northern property line. Much of that I expect would be used by staff. And then you do have some of this parking that is just before where it transitions to the villas. And then down here, a couple more. And so to Mike's point, we are going to be updating the zoning ordinance this year. So parking is something that we'll take a look at, make sure that the calculations are up to modern standards. And, but again, they are exceeding our current requirements. You may want to, if you want to.
I was just saying, Joe wanted to say some words about.
Sure.
Yep, go ahead.
I tried to bring that up, and it got added down because of the ordinance.
Right. You just wanna introduce yourself again?
Sure. I'm here, members of the board, good evening. I'm Joe Maratti with Trilogy Health Services, and this is the third straight year that I've been here. Started twenty twenty-three, go twenty twenty-three, so happy anniversary. I thank you for this opportunity to, to be here tonight and be at this site plan final approval. First of all, I wanna say thank you to you, Karen, for the last couple of years of help. You've been very helpful. She's a tremendous employee and tremendous asset to the community here, and also a very good broker between, you know, let's face it, a complicated project. It's, it's probably the most complicated and perhaps the single overall in the township. And so we're kind of the, I don't wanna say the Guinea pig, but we, we're presenting a much nicer and much more elaborate project than that Guinea pig. So Alexis, thank you to you too. You hired the right consultant, she's very customer-friendly, demanding at times, which is all right. But it's, it's for the benefit of not just the applicant, but also for you as the folks that live here have to cover, you know, this area for years to come. We just have to be right out there as you can see, so, so thank you to both of you, appreciate that. I think you know my style. I would encourage an open dialogue tonight. I'm here as long as you need me here to answer any questions. But tonight, I'm seeking your approval for our site plan approval based upon a tremendous amount of information that was submitted, a tremendous amount of effort from my colleagues, the Manfred Smith Group, and the Universal Design folks, my several engineers and architects. What you have in front of you, let's face it, that's a very complicated, darn near construction-related set of plans. Couple of things I've presented tonight, very nice, I've taken the tree survey, et cetera and so forth. That's between my landscape architect and Alexis, alright? It's a very small amount of detail that we have to finish up. And they require Alexis, you're being with Elsie, they can walk the site. It's already, we've already gone over there, we, we hired them to, to walk the site, to put tape on the trees that they think are applicable to the survey, and it's on paper now. You know, I would just ask that, you know, you allow, you know, Alexis and Elsie, my landscape architect, to just kind of finalize the building that you have, right? So by the way, thank you for your time, Travis, I appreciate it. What I'd like to do, to just feel any questions that you might have. Let's go back to a couple that came up. First of all, the sidewalk question. Sure, what would be the first ones to start with is a really good thing to do. Start that walking path from the developments that ultimately lead to the second corridor or the great hall room with Fish Lake. We have no problem putting a bike path and a walking path, a community path. And yes, it's gonna be the path that leads to nowhere for a while, okay? It's not the first time Trilogy's done. The fact is, when I was working for a civil engineering firm in Grand Rapids, a couple of years ago before I joined Trilogy, we have a project in Hudsonville, Michigan. I brought some pictures, aerial photos, and I can share them with you. It's the path that leads to nowhere. But what the township did do there is they had some tax money left over, and for those folks that did develop, and they wanted the path continued, they just went ahead and did it. Compliments of the taxpayers, if you will. They had money set aside to do that. And that's what I would encourage you guys to do. If somebody's gonna own a house to the south, a couple of pieces to the south, or Joey out to the north, and you wanna continue that path, you can try to find some room and a budget to continue that path. And it's not concrete, we're proposing hot mixed asphalt, which is asphalt paving. We think that's the better product. I presented that a couple of years ago. Concrete in the state of Michigan and throughout the Midwest, and they're gonna heat up, down, all around, tree roots are gonna push it up, and it becomes a risk to us to manage that. HMA or hot mixed asphalt is a much more flexible product. We would, you know, encourage the, that you guys approve of that, of that use. And that's the way I told my civil engineers to specify it on the drawings, okay? So hot mixed asphalt, and it's a good product. And it's, it's applicable in many jurisdictions, trust me, versus concrete, okay? So that would be something that along the Fish Lake Road, you know, I can answer your question, I will allow the bed look like this in future. With regards to parking, yes, we do exceed your zoning ordinance. We have a total of ninety-two proposed spaces, and that fits our form typically in our prototype. When they one-story building of this magnitude, we tip clear in that ninety to a hundred. If we go to a two-story building, which we're not, we go up to a hundred and twenty-five spots. So from day one, I've always presented, I think that ninety-two number, and that's what we have today. And there's nine parking spots that are dedicated that area.
These ninety-two are on top of what would be with the villas? Or does that include all the parking with the villas?
No, that's including, that's including the villas too, so. And the villas are the driveways, right? And those are, those are gonna be hot mixed asphalt driveways too. So one of the things on the site plan here, and let me try and zoom out with this a second. So in the, in the very entrance off of Fish Lake Road, our primary drive and loop around our convalescent home, and for also for truck traffic and for fire, is gonna be hot mixed asphalt, we'll refer to as heavy-duty paving. Thicker gravel base, and it's also a little bit thicker than asphalt mix. We do what we refer to as light duty or private driveway paving around the patio homes, and the driveways will be the same way. We have walkways, of course, all the way around, tremendous amount of flat concrete in and around our, our facility and around the convalescent home. Alexis talked about this pathway that leads to the future development of whatever, you know, happens up there with Buzz or whoever he sells it to. That'll connect at a later date, but we'll put that concrete into our property line. And again, what we'll do is we'll take that concrete across here. Now Joey owns this property right here, so you see a little bit of, kind of an outlier here. We're not gonna take the concrete all the way up to this property, or beyond our property up north of this, before we stop there. And so we're proposing that, that walkway or that public walkway along Fish Lake as a six-foot wide hot mixed asphalt lane. I'm sure somebody will use it at any time, you know, I'm sure perhaps some of our residents, even if they have family members, they might just take the walk down along their sidewalk from, even if they go a little bit to the north, a little bit to the south, at least they're getting their steps in, and it's, it's good, so.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
You're saying the pathway is going to be hot mixed asphalt and not concrete? The walking path?
That's right, not, not concrete, no. And I, I just explained how I think it's the right decision.
Which is hotter, correct? It's usually hotter?
Oh, no, no, this is not Arizona, hang on a second. We're not, we're not in Arizona, this is not desert land. It'll be hot when we lay it, once it cools down, the temperature's never gonna, I mean, it's, you know, mostly trees in general vicinity anyway. Think about the upheaval. Concrete has control joints, or supposedly control joints, but nobody can ever control what concrete does. So these joints that you place in concrete, they will start to upheave because of the weather conditions, the four seasons would hit. You don't see much of that with hot mixed asphalt. That's why you don't see joints in parking lots like you do with concrete. Because concrete has its own mind, wants to do its own thing, okay?
The pathways in the Riverside Development, south of that is the same as asphalt.
I was thinking temperature, bugging my dog, kinda thing. That's where my brain goes, and the brain next to you is going to be in that. So that's who owns that.
Right, to the south, yeah, to the south, I'm sorry. So Alexis had, you know, you've done a great job with the letters to the board, et cetera and so forth. I'm here to feel any questions that may have derived from your, you know, your thoughts on it or the previous comments made by Alexis. I kind of, well, maybe I would show a couple of photos of some of the projects we just finished last fall, but they're not showing on the screen.
Oh, on the screen, right down, yeah, you'll just have to open it and scoot it over.
I want to just back away here. Just open up a couple of pictures here. And I'll show you, these are two projects that we just finished in Meskegan, Michigan, and in Hudsonville. So they're aerial views, and I wanna just kind of, they derive from our own video that we did. So I wanna just kind of share with you a little bit of what you can expect. So this is on Meskegan Lake, we just finished this in August of last year. Same concept, we've got vinyl siding, our eaves are a different color elevation, our black roof, our walkways in and around our facility, et cetera and so forth, the, you know, hot mixed asphalt parking lots, et cetera and so forth.
Can I ask why the black roof, why is that?
That's our, that's our brand, that's our forte, you know, it's our brand. We bought by our, our partners. That's basically, we're gonna have to buy, buy more now with what's going on in the economy right now. But that's really what we do, is we, that's our forte, it's our brand, it's the way we, and this is a two-story on the lake. But it gives you an idea, you know, with shadowing, you can tell it looks darker, et cetera and so forth. So when you see the, when you see what we submitted, Universal Design does a great job on the 3D renderings that we submitted. Forty-three pages of elevation to colors. I mean, that's, that's almost unheard of at this level of somebody that much. But the nice thing is computers kick it out, you know what I mean? So from different vantage points, that's what you get. Let me go back to the tree comment. Good question. But a couple of years ago, before you were on the board, I mentioned everybody, we're wiping that site out. We are not keeping any trees, we just can't, okay? Yeah, because I said, yeah, no. Oh, we have so much masquerade to do. And the difference in the existing elevations and what we're gonna finish with is completely ninth day. This is a massive site work project. And the amount of filling that we have to do on the east, the amount of cutting that we have to do from the north, the ponds that we have to dig in, there's no tree that's gonna be saved, so. And Alexis is aware of that, and that's what our tree survey kind of reflects also, so. Again, it's another vantage point, and then I'll show you a couple from our Hudsonville project here. And these are condominiums that our driveway came in, these are existing condominiums that were there. We bought a piece of property back that was twelve acres, and we bought the additional property here too in case in the future we wanna do patio homes. So we didn't do patio homes there. But again, nice, beautiful view, finished product. This is one of our entrance drives, so in this, in this case, we have two entrance drives, as you're aware. And this is just, it's, it's a really, we do a really, really nice job implementing what we think is a beautiful brand, a beautiful prototype. Great finishes, extremely incredible interior, we have great staffs. You know, we hire local. You know, we're a hundred and thirty-six campuses strong as of the end of this past year. We've got four brand new ones under construction. And we're, I'm very proud of, of the product that we offer, how we operate it, how we build it. And I know you will be very proud of the end product. You know, you're gonna love what you see in a couple of years while we open this thing up. You're gonna be, give yourself a pat on the back as a planning commission for asking all the right questions you've done the last couple of years. But just as important is, this will be a great front runner for that whole Overly-Fish Lake is being first project. Any questions?
Just wanna show. Can you answer my question about you bought three acres? And again, I thought, I just thought it was interesting, what does it leave there? And why would they leave a strip that basically?
Well, okay, so can I go back to asking? So if we go back to that site plan, maybe go to Steve Tooth's one. Yeah, that, that should be good enough. So back before we bought, thank you, back before we bought the property from Buzz, and we bought it in July last year, we had like thirteen and a half acres. We had thirteen and a half acres of property under contract with them. And some of you may recall, there was a, we, we left like a sixty-six or maybe seventy-foot strip that was going from Fish Lake Road, and kind of went at an angle all the way up to about right here, okay? And that, that piece of property, we didn't, we didn't need, okay? He, we had an agreement with them for thirteen point five acres for conversation. And then the conversation with planning became, he can't do anything with it. It's, it means the whole ratio thing. It's, it means the whole ratio thing of four to one or depth to width, right? Buzz can't do anything with it, right? He was proposing, of course, you guys all know, but he proposed it over on the east and it's not approved yet. But that particular acreage, when we got closer to closing, he proposed it to, for us to buy it all at a very ridiculously low price. And I said yes. And the reason I said yes is because I now could take my stormwater ponds, which were very tight, and expand that whole area and become filtration ponds, storm detention ponds, and it was the best decision that we could make. Because now our stormwater systems, our stormwater ponds, everything that filters through here with these four bays, which are, you know, ponds that cleanse before they move onto the big pond. Everything on the south side, we benefited from that additional couple of acres to meet and exceed the Oakland County Stormwater Management requirements. Fact is, we have a hundred pages that we're submitted with this, but our stormwater management engineer, we have less stormwater leaving our site, once it's fully developed, than what currently leaves the site today. And how do we do it? Because of stormwater.
So is your property line now two houses and properties or what? Houses, but.
Yeah, I think, I think where there might be some confusion, perhaps you're looking at this gap here? Yeah, that's, even though it's on paper, we have a clean survey. We, we own this straight down.
Okay.
And these parcels actually go up to our property. Okay, even though it's not necessarily shown that way, and I don't really, I didn't survey anybody else's property to the south, but there's not a wedge. And if there, if there is, one, two, three, it's these properties that are going to just be continued to our parcel. So we, we own that straight.
Okay.
I think that's where you're going with that question.
Well, I'm just questioning why it was even left at the beginning. You know, it seemed very strange you'd leave a near a simple property.
I think somewhere along the line, somewhere along the line of past surveys, we just captured long. I really don't believe that. But it's not our property anyway, so, but we squared ours up and it comes straight east of us. So, does that make sense? Oh, you got that same whole.
I think it also includes a clean interview, so. This is the Oakland County Property Gateway. This is straight, they get the information straight from surveys. I, I do think that's something that maybe Karen and me could talk with those property owners about, because if you click these, it might take a minute, but it'll show all the information. Now, if you click this wedge, nothing. So I, I would support what Joe says, that it's just a mistake. It needs to be corrected.
I just couldn't figure out, it doesn't have to do with your development so much, but I go, why would you do development that left this strip of land that nobody owns and nobody, or, well, basically they would just let it back to the.
No heads on.
Yeah. Is that available, that for driveway or anything? Okay, that's why we just kind of find, find it out.
So again, I'm here to feel any questions. I can stay up here and answer them, or I can stand up every time you ask, that's okay too.
Well, back to parking, and I trust everybody else's math, but you say ninety-two, this is a hundred and fifty-two. What am I looking at wrong here?
I'm sorry, ninety-two for the, for the campus. If you look at very big ones, ninety-two for the campus, sixty for the Villas.
Okay, so Glenn asked about the Villas, you said that ninety-two included, but sixty for the Villas is. And that's based on the driveways, I'm assuming, for the Villas, correct?
Yeah, correct. So right now, if you look at page one and the provided statement, total campus parking requirements, ninety-two, where your ordinance says fifty-eight. And then the building, the building including your courthouse, your ordinance says sixty-three, provided sixty, total of a hundred and fifty-two, ordinance says one-twenty-one. So we're thirty possible.
Okay. Yeah. Just a clarification, I think that's all straight now. So how deep are the driveways? I don't have a measurement on this print that I'm looking at, so I'm just curious what the depth is there.
Whatever your ordinance requires.
Yeah, but they don't, they don't drive my truck. I want to be sure, it makes sense, it should be deep enough you can park two vehicles.
Well, hang on a second. We don't necessarily need to design to find your truck. I can tell you. I'd have to find it.
Especially your truck.
Well, my guesses are going to be nine by eighteen or nine by twenty. And if I go through all my notes here and I filter them.
Well, aren't they, aren't they, wouldn't they be eighteen or twenty feet wide?
No, no, nine feet wide. That would be eighteen or twenty.
Yeah, they're equivalent to the.
But I love the way this looks like, I thought, looks like, like a double-width driveway. Am I looking through print wrong? Well, this picture looks like it's got the garage, the garage is in the center of both units, right? So don't the driveways? So isn't that driveway two cars wide?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's where the garage is.
That's right here.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the driveways themselves for the, yeah, for all, well, whatever, condos, the individual units.
Yeah, the rental.
Right, so those are, basically it's two single garages, correct?
There are two single drives.
And then a double-width, a double-width drive. And that was my question, how deep that driveway? Do you think that's twenty feet deep?
Well, no, we have that, we have that in summary.
Oh, you might. I, my eyes can't read that smaller print, so if it's on there, I can't see it.
Alexis, if you look at this space here compared to this, just visually, it is bigger than the standard parking space. But let's see if the.
Hey, I'm sure it's good. I'm really not complaining. I think it's a great idea.
And the driveway around the building is two-way traffic, right? So you can meet vehicles. Not intended to park.
I saw that somewhere, but I don't, I don't see it.
Well, it's just basically that's going to be the parking for those condos, houses. I want to be sure that, you know, we don't have vehicles sticking out in the road.
Oh, no, 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 you're not going to have that.
Well, I would assume.
I thought I saw that somewhere, but I don't. Guess I didn't.
I would like that better. Twenty-four makes sense to me.
Yeah, wherever that depth was in, but we had an initial, when we initially submitted, we had a dimension on there. But you must assure that, I mean, each tenant, I think it's important for everybody to hear this. We have, we have biologs that will be in the way of parking. Each tenant gets a single parking stall within their garage, plus one additional space outside of their garage. And they will not, they, they will not encroach, no vehicle's going to encroach the public walkway. So actually, there's a limit on that. So there's enough depth here, and I'm afraid we don't have the dimension shown. But vehicle one, vehicle two will not have its rear end over the sidewalk, the public sidewalk.
Which would be, that'd be good.
So that's, that's important to know.
And my assumption is, if they need extra parking, the assumption is they'll be able to use those spaces right there?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, we're not, we don't, we don't allow the concrete parking and, and we don't, we don't encourage that at all. Fact is, even our rental agreements will save no more than two vehicles per one of their drivers.
Well, still, people come visit eventually.
Oh, sure, yeah, when they come to visit, they might park in a street somewhere.
And then my other question is, on the fire department stuff, we have a fire department here. It, it says various things they've recommended, and the backside it says it's all good, but all it talks about is the hydrants. It doesn't talk about that tenant, sure, that loop system and stuff.
Yeah, we've satisfied them.
Okay. That's not, that's not on this side. Okay, well, I, I'm not figuring out.
Yeah, and I replied back. So we get those letters through Alexis that come to us, they're engineers, and we reply back. That's probably not from you yet, but we've satisfied.
Well, I'm thinking that's, that's all above, above my grade, but they, they know what they're talking about. That's who you guys do too. It's a long, long, a good page. That's good.
Was there any other questions from, from a fire perspective? I think we've satisfied all of your, your requirements and the parking signs and the open, open fire lanes and.
The hydrant spacing and placing, F C and so forth, yeah.
We did a great set of plans. Hold on, as well, as well, I'm an engineer firm, and that's their top, that's their city from the county, from the fire department, appreciate that.
And just to go on the backside of the NAGFA letter, is that emailed? So, okay.
I got, which it talked about, it said, it said acceptable, but then it just talked about relocated the fire, it didn't talk about that loop thing.
Sure.
If, if everybody's happy, that's.
All right, I thought we pulled aboard, we kind of had to say, if anyone comments, because I think we're getting close to the point of asking for motion and they vote, so. Chuck, do you have anything that you want to comment on?
No, I think, I had a couple of questions, but they've all been answered, so I'm, I think I'm good.
So you think things look okay then, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. Ray?
That's all answered, I'm good.
Okay. Derek? Michael?
I only have one comment, and that's, that's the coloring of the property, which is, I don't know if I can even explain it, but it looks fine, looks like a great coloring system, but we may want to look in the future to incorporate actual colors into the scape. What seems to be the trend is everything's going to monochromatic, which is very clean and not obtrusive looking and stuff. But the problem is, we have colored eyes. And the differentiation of colors is important to the human brain and the human nervous system and whatnot. So although it looks great, the problem would be is everything's going to go black and white and brown and gray. And I don't know how to incorporate it in this, and maybe it's way above our pay grade or whatever, but that's just a concern I have, is everything's going monochromatic. And I don't know how to actually incorporate color into landscapes or building scapes or, to make things more human instead of more computer, right? Because a computer is black and white, on, off, all that kind of good stuff. And so, I don't know, it's just a, maybe, maybe a useless concept.
My concept was kind of, it blends more into landscaping, it lets the trees and that be more colorful and that. Probably the idea is not to stand out, blend in more is probably some of the concept.
Yeah, some of the concept.
That's just my, my own comments.
I know. It's a, it's a very interesting discussion.
A few years old change, and it'll be all different colors.
Would, would, yeah.
Yeah, what I, Michael, what I would say, what I'd say is, you have a valid point. At the same time, I think Glenn's got the right idea, and I think the color scheme fits it is, we're still a very much of a green community. So we're, this, these color schemes, I think, fit quite well. I agree. But I also know from my years of being in the, the real estate business, this too shall pass. The, the, it will, the colors will cycle back in. They've kind of cycled out a little bit. We see it interior as well as exterior, but it's, we are seeing that it's not dramatic. So I don't know, I, good point, I'm not discounting it. But I think you'll see that it will be shifting within a few years, and we'll start to see other pallets start to come out. Because you're right, we don't want to become a very simplistic-looking community. Color is good.
Human, yeah.
Yeah.
The good thing is, the, the exterior treatment is vinyl siding and it can be changed.
Mm-hmm.
As long as the structural inside can, you know, withstand seventy-five years of use. But I don't, that's my comments. Oh, the other thing we need to watch out for, I apologize, is which one needs to be, is there a sequence that needs to happen on the passing of these two or not passing of these two? Or is it doesn't?
I would just go base, on the agenda, the site plans first and then the special land use. And I wanted to add to your comment, when we go to update the zoning ordinance, that is something that we plan to address. So in the master plan, there is a lot of discussion about architectural standards, and that's not necessarily all made its way to the ordinance yet. So, you know, color being one of them, but also just general character and design. So that's something that we will definitely be addressing and can make more specific so that it's not just any color except black. You know, it's, well, we actually want to see this kind of material or this type of colorway so that you're, again, building the character of this area specifically in the overlay district in particular.
Yeah, it's going to be a complex conversation, I imagine, because it's, colors are colors.
Leslie? Okay, Derek did mention somebody, he was wondering about lighting, and I don't remember seeing too much written about it.
Yeah, I didn't see it in your, I'm sure you haven't, but.
We, what, what page was the electrical lighting?
Um, so.
It's not going to be fixtures, something that we're on.
Yeah, we, we. We're going to light the site definitely.
Yeah, we really need to work on our light trespass ordinance.
Yeah, no, yeah, we won't trespass either. We, we, I'm trying to think of that, the latter part here, I have the shot point here.
Yep.
Twenty-one and twenty-two, I put candle readings. And we have the sketch, we have the technical picture. So in the drawings, look at twenty-two and twenty-three and I think it says sixteen.
Sixteen foot pole?
Yeah, sixteen foot pole. And we typically are about, out of the ground by about four inches with the concrete, then a sixteen foot pole, straight down light. It's a really nice structure, so.
All downward lights.
That makes sense.
All downward lights, so they're focused down.
Yeah, so.
Inject the lights that focus down.
They have filters for the four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty nanometer light spectrum? Or no, just kidding. We're going to have to add that, we're going to have to add that to our lighting.
For the next developer, right?
The four hundred and sixty nanometer.
Yeah, those are wall packs, so we've got wall packs, through the light wall packs, L E Ds. So those are in your setup plans also. So there's a commitment to light the site.
All right, are we ready to make the motion?
Well, I'll start the first one. That we approve the site plan application from Trilogy Health Services, three oh three, North Hurstborne Parkway, Suite 200, Louisville, Kentucky. For the planned development that will consist of a convalescent home, independent living housing in Paso, zero one dash two eight dash one zero one dash zero one eight.
Is there a second to raise motion?
I would include the recommendations put forth by H R C on the back, right?
I was going to mention, there are a couple of conditions that we recommended. The tree survey, yep. And then the approval of the special land use amendment, which is the next item on the agenda.
I guess, do we want to include something for the H R C people? Because that said there was things that they had to fix.
I mean, McKenna made recommendations on the back, we need to include those into the motions.
So how do we want to word that?
So basically what you said, but then on the condition that, on the last page of the site plan memo, it's got our recommended conditions.
You want me to read all that too?
Well, if you, if you, you could reread it, because it does have the actual good verbiage there.
Oh, my gosh. I think it's.
You need to have a right, right of hand.
You, you've gone to the right page?
I'm not sure if that's it or not.
So I think they're crafted in a very.
Oh, the recommendations right there.
Oh, my gosh, I never should have started this whole thing.
Does he have to read the whole thing into the record, or can we just reference it? Ah, they want you to read it.
With recommendations in the McKenna letter.
You could refer to the letter.
And the date.
Okay, I, I like that. So we'll, we'll, we'll reference the, the McKenna letter, all the recommendations and the trees. Correct?
The date is April Fool's Day.
Uh-oh.
With, with the recommendations in the McKenna letter.
I like all of it.
Yeah, I, because you'll do the minutes, right? I would say you could reference the letter, but I would mention the conditions mentioned in the letter. So the reason that's important is because it'll note in the minutes that they must meet this condition before the approval is final.
Got all that here? Perfect.
Oh, it is, oh, it is recorded, okay.
Right.
Yeah, you jump for it.
Second. Second, Derek? Any further discussion before we vote? So we're voting on the site plan application approval. Close in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passed. Special land use amendment. You can't get ready to do this one now.
No.
This was a starter.
Wait, one, two, eight, one, one eighteen, yeah, there it is.
Mike has it here, I believe you're...
All right, sir, I'll make a motion, we recommend the planning commission approves the amendment, previously approved with special use permit for planned development that will consist of convalescent home and independent living housing on parcel number zero one two eight one oh one zero one eight, based on their plans dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Based on our site plan review, number four, dated at April one, twenty twenty-five, on the condition that the compliant tree survey and replacement plan are submitted, which can be reviewed administratively.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Chuck, any further discussion before we vote?
So, do you have a question?
Sure.
We already approved that, correct, this is just extending the special land use?
So, the original approval was extended in February, this, tonight, what you're approving is the amendment to that approval because of the additional property they acquired and the additional units.
So does this have a timeline to it also?
Correct, so it will, it'll restart today, the one-year, the special use permits have a one-year timeline that they need to pull a building permit, if they don't, the special use permit will expire.
Okay.
Okay, with that, those in favor approving the special land use amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion passed. Reports, any reports by members here, anything happening that we want to report? Public comment?
Not a lot of public out there.
Well, I, I guess it, I'm a parcel, I'm a parcel owner, right? Thank you, thank you for approving my project, I'll be out in Trilogy Hall. And thank you for working with me for the last couple of years, I appreciate your feedback, appreciate your comments, some of you are doing it more than I welcome doing. I, I can tell you that we will now go fast and furious to finish the plans to get them permitted, and our goal is to try and have site work commenced realistically, probably right after July, before holiday, we anticipate permits, and on a positive note, we have all of our agreements in place with Buzz Silverman and Village, the water and sewer, so we're paying for that to be extended to our property, and we worked out an agreement with Buzz for reimbursement program at a later date, so Trilogy's taken a lead on that water and sewer with Tim Price, and we will be managed, we will be managing that with our site work contract, okay? So that's a good one, so, thank you very much.
Make us proud and build us well, please.
Oh, yeah. All right, motion to adjourn. Moved by Derek, and seconded by Ben, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.